Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Public Hearing on Historic Designation for the Citizens Bank in East Liberty. Today, I am joined by Erica Strausberger and Councilman Bobby Wilson. I don't see any other members of council. I thought I saw Mr. Kraus here. There's Mr. Kraus. If we ask the clerk to read the title of the bill and then after that, Sarah Quinn from the Historic Designation will give us an overview.
Bill 1612, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as the East Liberty Mellon Bank located at 6112 Penn Avenue in East Liberty in the 8th Ward. The owner's agent is opposed to the nomination.
Thank you very much. And now we have Ms. Quinn from City Planning, who oversees historical designations. If you would give your overview for us, please.
Certainly. What first thing I'm going to do is go ahead and share my screen with you. The nomination that was submitted contained a lot of photographs, which... Can you all see that?
Yes.
Right here, the green triangle is the building. This property is located at 6112 Penn Avenue. It was nominated by a woman named Brittany Riley. It's located in the East Liberty neighborhood and it's also in Reverend Councilman Burgess's district. Scroll forward. See some photos. There's this figure one is the front of the building. Figure two is the side. The north, the front facade measures seven bays in width and it's symmetrical. It presents a central entrance via recessed five bay portico, flanked on either end by facility of two brick piers. A period detailed folded plate aluminum fashion marks the edge of the portico soffit featuring recessed down lighting. The southeast side of the building measures 10 bays in width and it's asymmetrical. Reading the building from left to right, which is the southwest of the northeast, one bay through six comprised of south facing step back of the central Center Avenue facade. The southeast facade speaks to previous historical iterations and key civic intersections of Central Avenue and Penn Avenue. Remarkably, a facade whose construction layout and design was governed by a since-altered street layout. You can see this is the back of the building. The rear of the facade measures seven bays in width. Here, the bricks massing deconstructs to a sawtooth plan of sliding planes and seven emerging office bays. An ingenious solution for stepping back in rhythm with the busy street it parallels. This sawtooth plan functioned to shield interior offices from street noise while also maximizing natural light. Finally, the northwest facade, which is, can be seen right here, is clad in stucco panels with green brick plinth. One defined bay feature featuring a window opening is present in the northeastern end of the facade. Historically, this facade abutted the Sheridan Square Theater and was not intended to be seen. Let's pull forward here some more photographs. Here's the building right here. Photograph from 1971. By the early 1960s, Mellon's decision to modernize their existing Liberty, East Liberty branch was directly influenced by the authority for the area. On September 8th, 1968, Mellon National Bank announced that the former City Deposit Bank at Penn and Center Avenues in East Liberty would be demolished and replaced with a new bank facility. So in late 1968 and early 1969, the East Liberty Office of the Mellon National Bank moved its operations across Center Avenue while preparations and groundbreaking ensued for the new branch design. For the new East Liberty branch, material choices and considerations of the site surrounding were on par with how the Mellon Buildings Department approached other modern branches shown in the documentation, which I will get to later on. Soaring windows capture national light. Swaths of eye-catching green glazed brick wrap the building in the Center Avenue facing staggered plant setbacks to maximize a triangular lot. A more classically symmetrical entrance facade opens along Penn Avenue. The bank building was designed by Pittsburgh-based firm Lyth Just and Shetland, who designed the East Liberty Carnegie Branch a year earlier in 1968 on nearby Woodfield Street, consisting of concrete and steel frame with brick infill and recessed ground floor enclosed glass, which was renovated in 2010. Their portfolio also includes the original Squirrel Hill branch of the Carnegie Library built in 1972. Several local synagogues, the Beth Hemmadrash Hagadal Beth Jacob Congregation located in downtown, the Gemellos Chesthead Synagogue in White Oak, the New Wing of Temple Sinai in Squirrel Hill, and the Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School on North Side, which opened in 1973. Mellon Bank had a history of... Well, it could be called an architectural heritage, in fact. During the 1950s and 60s, Mellon Bank developed a systematic approach to modern branch office buildings, beginning with downtown Pittsburgh Core, moving outward through the city's neighborhoods and eventually to the more suburban locales. The company successfully utilized architecture and its branches as a business outreach and marketing tool. The bank kept pace with contemporary design practices in the Pittsburgh region. This resulted in an accumulation of above-average, often delightful, bank branches ripe for preservation and reuse. The Pittsburgh firm Hoffman, Luffler, and Wolf completed Mellon's National Bank Office, the university office, excuse me. It was located at the busy, highly visible intersection of Craig Street and 5th Avenue in Pittsburgh's Oakland neighborhood. Demolished in 2004, this design boasts a reinforced concrete shell roof and, of course, surrounded by glass curtain wall. Starting in the mid-1960s, Mellon Bank maintained a "building supervision department" in-house unit focused on design materials, colors, construction, interior planning, largely led by Assistant Vice President in Charge of Buildings, Mr. Edward L. Becker, under whom innovations as efficient prefabricated branch models were developed. Under this program, Mellon National Bank invested heavily in the design of its bank branches, expressed through a variety of designs throughout the greater Pittsburgh area, including Squirrel Hill, Uptown Lawrenceville, Millville, and East Liberty, which is the building of the nomination. In early 1965, a modern Squirrel Hill branch to replacing the existing one across Murray Avenue opened beneath a concrete umbrella, which achieved, was achieved through a 27-hour continuous core of 204 cubic yards of concrete to the fascination of onlookers. And I'll just go ahead and scroll to some of the photographs of some of these branches. That's the branch in question. This is the 5th Avenue branch, the Uptown branch, which is still, looks almost exactly the same as it does today. This is the squirrel, this is the Squirrel Hill branch with the umbrella. You can see it lit up at night. And then... I'll mention the Lawrenceville branch, which is the one you're looking at now. It's an important corner location at Main and Butler Street, opened in December 1966, as a modern brick structure with drive-in service and ample customer parking. I believe this is going to be a pop-up food market at this time and they've maintained the architectural detailing as well. And this is the one that's been demoed, I believe. Right there. Yep. So, let's see what else I have for you all. That's really, that's what I have for you all today. What I can say is that it was interesting hearing stories about these buildings. When we took it to, when we did the presentation for the Planning Commission, I believe it was Becky Mingo, who was an architecture student at CMU and their Modern Design Course sent them to the bank branches to do drawings of the individual buildings as part of their class exercises. So we didn't know that going in, that was kind of interesting. But that's what I have for you all today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, Sarah.
Sure.
Which criterion makes this building historic? Of all of the criteria enlisted, which of the established criterion does this fit?
Well, what I can tell you is there were, the commission identified a couple and they weren't necessarily the same as what the nominator did, but they were certainly significant. The first one was criteria seven. It's association with important cultural and social aspects or events in the history of the city of Pittsburgh. And one of the things I didn't bring out in my discussion today was that, but it's in the packet you received and also in the nomination available on our website, is that Mellon Bank, when they initiated this program of doing modern architecture for their individual branches, that really spurred sort of competition in town for other PNC Bank in particular, did the same thing with some of their branches. So it was sort of, they were trying to one-up each other on the design and the scale and the fabric of the buildings. So that was the main one.
So the main one, let me hear you. The main one does not really talk about the building itself, but that it spurred other activity to... Because when I looked at the packet, I did not see, I did not see the traditional rationalization for the building itself being historic. I just didn't see it in the packet.
Well...
Maybe it's there somewhere that I didn't see. That's why I'm asking you specifically, because I did not see justification for the building itself being historic.
Well, it's criteria number seven. There are 10 criteria that are allowed that you can choose from. Number seven was the strongest of those.
It's association with other things.
It's association with spurring a movement and being part of a program. I mean, ideally, I mean, the HRC asked this of the nominator as well. Ideally, we would have the 5th Avenue Mellon Bank building and we would have the Squirrel Hill Mellon Bank building nominated at the same time. It didn't work out that way, but this is part of a set and part of a program, so.
Second question is, is the nominator a member, is a resident of the city or a resident of the community which they nominated it? Which, where do they live?
What I would tell you is they're required to be a resident of the city of Pittsburgh. The young lady's name, or I shouldn't call her a young lady. The woman's name is Brittany Riley. I know she's planning to speak later on. So you can certainly ask her which part of the city she lives in.
Yes. I'm getting old, right? They're nominating buildings I watch being built, right? I went to the Sheridan Square Theater, saw Ben-Hur there, went to the bakery next door to Sheridan Square, bought chocolate chip cookies. And so now they're building buildings and making them historic that I watched being built. I watched that building being built from the ground up. And so I guess I'm historic too.
I, so am I, because I was around when this was built, which is...
Yeah, I remember.
House medicine, I swear.
Remember them building it specifically.
Yeah.
But I was, you know, I'll leave my thought about it. Architecture is an odd building. It is absolutely an odd-looking building.
It is.
It really is odd-looking. All right, so I will ask now...
I have a question to you and then we'll go into listening to the public.
Mr. Kraus.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hi, Sarah, welcome. Thanks for being here. The question I have for you is who, we're told the owner of the property is an opposition. I believe that's the terminology. Who is the owner of the building?
Okay, well, the owner... I'll read this to you. I believe what I put in my, the legislation was the owner's agent was opposed to the nomination. The owner of the building is ARC CPPBGPA010LLC on Camelback Road in Phoenix.
So the owner, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So the physical owner of the property is a local liability corporation, which is, or a limited, forgive me, limited liability corporation that is housed in Phoenix, Arizona?
Yes, and Citizens Bank, because they have association with this building, has been acting as the owner's agent. Yeah, we felt that would be appropriate, so.
So I'm just sort of confused as to who opposes it. And if, if I may, but yeah, let me finish. My question is that, and perhaps this is more a question for our law department, is a rental tenant permitted to oppose this nomination? Or does it need to be this limited liability corporation in Phoenix, Arizona, that has, I guess, no interest in the property here other than investment? And so I think what I'm going to need is a little clearer and better understanding of who actually holds this property and whether or not within the process that we have designed for ourselves here in Pittsburgh for a historic nomination is our... Is the proper person opposing the nomination, I guess, is my question.
I think, don't know this for sure, but I think the LLC is actually part of Citizens Bank. I don't know that for sure, but I think these properties are owned. They were owned by Mellon and Citizens bought out Mellon. I'm pretty sure that when you unveil this, there is a straight financial ownership in one way or another by Citizens Bank. I'm pretty sure, that's what's going to, you're going to find that out, but I don't know.
Yeah, I would recommend, I mean, if you want me to forward information to the law department at the appropriate time, I can certainly do that. I can tell you that we have forwarded all of our required notification letters to the LLC in Phoenix and have received no response back.
Okay. We own by Citizens Bank. I kind of think that.
Mr. Chair? May I continue? Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, just for the sake of the discussion of the, of the fact that there is opposition to the nomination, just, I just think respectfully, I would need a clear understanding of who this owner really is and whether or not they fit within the system we've created for owners to actually oppose the nomination of the property. Something else that I've kind of uncovered and I don't know that, whether or not you can answer this question for me or not so that I can make an informed decision. There appears to be some understanding or understanding between Citizens and the LLC that, that a tenant who's renting a space has the right to demolish the owner's property and rebuild it if they would choose to do so. Did that come up in the discussion in any way that you're aware of?
Me? I can tell you that came up in a discussion, I believe it might have been right when we got the nomination, because I, and I might be mistaken. There's, there are folks from Citizens waiting to speak later on at the hearing. I believe there was a demolition permit that was applied for, perhaps.
Yeah, but that's not my question for you. I may respect this, I'm a question. And I think you're right, that perhaps is more a question for, for representatives from Citizen and we can always take that offline as well too. I just, you know, we argue process on the council all the time and making certain that the processes that we've designed were following and if indeed we want to follow the process that if an owner objects to nomination, regardless of the building, this is just structural and procedure and process. It would help the council, I believe, to have a clear understanding of the owner and knowing that the owner, physically titled holder of the building opposes the nomination. I appreciate your time, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And, but we do know in this, in full disclosure, and those citizens will explain that. It is their intention to demolish the building and build a new facility. And this, this nomination has been nominated to stop that plan. They've already engaged the community. We're already having community engagement about the new building. And so this historic designation occurred because it is Citizens' plan to demolish the building and build a new structure. So with that, I'm going to ask...
If I may, because I think you spoke that to me. I believe that to be speculative in nature. I have nothing definitive that states...
No, it's not speculative. I've said in meetings...
But, but, yeah. Right, but we're, we all have to cast a vote and we appreciate the, you know, the importance of cashing and casting and informed vote. And so beyond, I have nothing that says that's what happened. And so for me, that's speculative in nature and I, you know, I'd be happy to research it on my own and find out if that is indeed what happened. But it is my understanding as well too. If I do understand it correctly, that, that it is Citizens' desire to demolish this building and build another bank building, I guess to be able to add parking, I think that's the criteria or the motive behind it. Again, that's speculative. I can't say that that is definitively what's happened here either, so.
Go in the building. If you walk in the building, it's 90% of it's not being used. It no longer serves the purpose it was built for. So if you go into it, which I do, because I'm a citizen member, it's the closest bank to my home, I'm a customer. It is not being currently used, maybe 90% of it. The upstairs is not being used. The full first floor is not being used. It is, you know, it is, it is, it is what it is, but it is probably 90% of the building is not being utilized by citizens in its current form. That part's, if you walk in, it's, you know, you can just see it. It's not, it's not speculative, that part's true. So we'll ask Brenda to just, you know, to call the speakers for us and we'll hear their concern. And then I guess it'll come back before council, I suppose, tomorrow. It doesn't matter to me, we can do it tomorrow or next Wednesday. Either one's fine with me. We are muted, Brenda.
Madam Clerk, we cannot hear you, but you're not muted on the screen anyway.
Well, she doesn't do it. So I will see if I can figure out a way to get to the speakers myself. I will try.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Sorry. First person is Jason Jones, followed by Cliff Levine.
Oh, Jerry. Hi, Jerry. Jerry, you're muted.
Hey, so, so, so it's actually Jerry and Jason and then Cliff's actually going to speak first.
Okay. Here.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm sorry, it's the inverse. Cliff is going to speak first.
It's fine.
Cliff.
Yeah. Cliff Levine.
Cliff Levine.
Cliff.
Okay.
Okay.
Very nice. Cliff.
All right, am I on?
You're here.
All right. Thank you so much. Let me just quickly, I represent Citizens Bank. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Let me just quickly identify some of the questions that were raised. There is a real estate investment trust that owns a number of buildings that is the landlord and owner of the building. They submitted a letter, we sent it to Ms. Prey by email and we're also sending it certified mail. So the LLC, the REIT, has opposed this. They have a long-term lease. They had entered into a long-term lease with Citizens. The lease actually explicitly contemplated the demolition of the building and it's in the lease. And so both the owner and the long-term tenant opposed the nomination. As Reverend Burgess indicated, the building is really outdated for banking use. It's about 15,000 square feet. They really only need about 3,000 square feet. Also, a lot of the buildings from 50 years ago are very energy inefficient. They would like to have more light and a more efficient building and they, and, and they had designed some rear parking. There is no drive-through in the proposal. So this went in front of, got the nomination. They had already started the process to start the demolition. So there was some, some damage done in that process and then, of course, everything has to stop. So the building is in pretty bad condition right now with water leaks, et cetera. When this got nominated, it was actually nominated to follow up on Ms. Quinn's comments. It got nominated for, under three separate conditions. Criteria three is that it was somehow architecturally significant. Think falling water. Condition five was it was part of some urban design. So think like Gateway Center downtown. And number 10 was that it was like an iconic neighborhood building. So think East Liberty Presbyterian Church or Motor Square Garden or some iconic building that would be representative of the neighborhood. So when I, we got this, I actually called Jerry Morosco, an architect, and I knew him from my days when I was on the Planning Commission and the zoning board many years ago. And I knew Jerry, number one, was actually an advocate for historic preservation. And number two, he had actually studied at Frank Lloyd Wright School, Talisman in Arizona. So I knew that he really had unique knowledge of mid-century. And I just asked him, you know, what do you think? How do you evaluate this and to follow Reverend Burgess's idea? You know, these are newer buildings, so how, how do you look at this in the historical context? So he jumped into that analysis and he prepared an analysis for the board and he basically concluded that it was not architecturally significant. There were other buildings, even within the limited world of like branch bank buildings, that really had certain like cantilever design or that were spoken of or identified as key buildings. And this was more of a hodgepodge of design and he goes through that analysis for number three. It clearly wasn't part of, it wasn't like a gateway center or wasn't an instrumental building and it certainly wasn't iconic. Nobody would think of, if you say East Liberty, nobody says, ah, the Mellon Branch Building. You know, that just didn't come up. So he then did this analysis and it's really noteworthy that the plan, the Historic Review Commission really adopted, accepted what he said. One member called it a brilliant analysis.
So it's because it was three minutes that was happening?
Not sure, David. These are, yeah, I think so. He has, he's down as a registered speaker. So it would be the three minutes unless you guys decide on a expand the registered speaker list, because that's what they are, registered speaker. So it would be limited to the three minutes unless you...
Members?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, I don't mean to speak over other people. It seems even that Mr. Levine is, is more of a presenter than a registered speaker. I think it would be beneficial to the council to hear what, what he has to say, within reason, and we're not talking a 20-minute presentation, but I think it would be helpful.
Thank you very much. If that, by common consent, David, if you'll let me back in, please.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Kraus. And then I will be brief here. So at the hearing, at the, at the HRC hearing, the, 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 the commission was struggling with the idea. They said it doesn't mean three, it doesn't mean five, it doesn't mean criteria 10, but there was some concern about, well, do we want to have this smaller branch building? Which, interestingly, they told us not to present anything about the new building because it was entirely irrelevant to a historic designation process. During the meeting, Ms. Quinn suggested what we could consider criteria number seven. They were kind of looking for something. So they said number seven. And number seven is interesting because it says that this building, it's, it would be historic if it had an association with an important cultural or social aspect of events in the history of Pittsburgh or Pennsylvania, the United States. So think Ford's Theater where Lincoln was shot or the Stonewall Inn where the LGBT movement began. That's typically what you mean by an important cultural event. Well, clearly there was no singular cultural event or historical event that occurred at the Mellon Branch Office. And so the discussion morphed into that it was part of the East Liberty redevelopment, the urban renewal experience of 1970. And to this, we also responded, and Jerry had included it in his work, that there were many, many publications that talked about East Liberty. Rothschild Doigno did a study for the Planning Commission in 2004. In 2010, Angelique Baumback and Mike Eversmeyer put in a nomination for the National Historic, to have a National Historic Designation and literally excluded this building, didn't mention it and didn't even include... and didn't even include the parcel. And although it was a newer building, it did, this analysis did mention the library. In the Rothschild Doigno study in 2004, they designated lots of historic buildings, no mention of this building. And then there were other various publications, modern architecture, talking about East Liberty, no mention of this building. So number one, we don't think this building stands out as particularly noteworthy, not like maybe the Tasso Towers or whatever, that were more symbolic of that East Liberty redevelopment. And secondly, and finally, the point I would like to make is, that would be a really terrible standard if this commission, if this council allowed that to be the standard. If we were to say this building represented a failed urban renewal project, and that just because you were part of a failed urban renewal project, that has historical significance, it would mean that we can't undo the mistakes of the past. It could affect the North Side, the Hill District, East Liberty, and many other neighborhoods. And so we think it's a very dangerous standard. As Mr. Morosco said and has pointed out, this is not an architecturally significant building. The commission did not find it was. It simply found that it had this link to the failed East Liberty Historic Project. And we think that's just insufficient and shouldn't be the basis for that analysis. So, thank you.
Nope.
Okay, so now, thank you, Mr. Levine. We'll go to our next speaker.
Jason Jones.
Hello, how are you guys? Jason Jones, Citizens Bank. I actually stand, I know you can't see it, but we're actually in the building, and it's in terrible, terrible shape. So I am the Community Development Market Manager for Citizens. I oversee this branch. And, you know, currently, you know, it's just too large. I think we discussed that. It's about 15,000 square feet, and we really only need 2,000 square feet. There's no energy efficiency, and so that's, you know, really important. Now, it's very dark, so it's interesting that they would say that there's, you know, natural lighting. But it doesn't, you know, for the communities that we serve, Homewood, Lormer, Garfield, you know, those, we want a more welcoming branch. And I think they would appreciate a more welcoming branch, especially with going on, you know, kind of ensuring that everyone has fair access to lending and capital and branches. And so it's just not, it's just, it just doesn't fit that need either. We're really welcome to pay homage to the building. There's a parklet. And I understand this is the, you know, kind of breath of East Liberty and walking into it. You know, we're fine with doing something like that in the parklet or maybe a mural. We're really happy to work with the city to try to get that accomplished. Again, there's just a ton of, you know, remediation that has to happen. You know, standing in it, you know, it's not the safest environment, and it's not, again, in the best condition. The roof, there's asbestos. There's a lot kind of going on. So again, I just wanted to, you know, kind of point those points out. And being, you know, an actual East Liberty resident myself, growing up here, we have a letter of support from ELDI, which you guys have access to. And then also Tammy Thompson, she's also a resident, and she runs an incubation space here for small businesses. And it's really kind of been an inconvenience to them as well. So thank you for the time. I think that's about three minutes, so. Next, we'll have Jerry Morosco, I guess.
Well, we'll follow our list. Brenda, who do you have next?
Yes, it's Gerald Morosco.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Jerry. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi.
Yeah, Jason said we did brave ourselves here into the building, which, if you can see over my shoulder, is in a state of incredible deterioration, because they had already done asbestos remediation and started the demolition of the property. I've actually known this building. I know most of you know me, associate me with South Side where I make my home. But I, in 1986 and 87, I worked on the project for the restoration of Motor Square Garden, and then worked out of the then former YMCA in 87, 88. And in the early 90s, did quite a bit of work in the East Liberty Commercial District. So I've known this building for a long time. In 2016, I moved my offices to East Liberty, and I literally see this building every day. So I know it beyond my sort of credentials as a preservationist. When Cliff called me about the nomination, I was immediately curious if I had somehow missed some significance of the building. So I did due diligence and made calls to Pittsburgh preservationists and academics in my circle, trying to confirm my hunch that it was not significant. As Cliff mentioned, there were six significant surveys and academic exposes, the most recent in the last year, that focused on East Liberty and the modern movement in architecture. They all omit this building. The omission is conspicuous. Angeline Bamberg, who was former staff to the HRC and with Mike Eversmeyer, the author of the successful 2010 nomination of the East Liberty Commercial Historic District to the National Register of Historic Places, concurred with my observation, and I'm quoting her. "The nominator seemed to have decided that the building is significant, then gathered information which often just coincides with significant aspects of East Liberty's development." I think you all have my detailed report to the nomination. The HRC, if you listen to their discourse, determined, as Cliff said, that the building did not meet any of the three original nominating criteria. Then staff suggested criteria seven, the association with important cultural, social aspects in the history of Pittsburgh, alluding that that related somehow to the failed East Liberty redevelopment plan. Again, quoting Angelique Bamberg, "Urban renewal is obviously a story of tremendous local and national importance and provides a distinctive context in which architecture from the 1950s, the 1960s, and 70s might be evaluated for significance. That said, as you note, meaning my report, there is no evidence that the Mellon Bank Building was part of the East Liberty Plan, even though it is of the same architectural moment. In other words, modernism and urban renewal overlapped, but were not the same." The last point I'd like to make is, the standard for an individual historic structure is very high. This is not, everybody gets a trophy. Buildings like this in the context of historic district might be rendered significant in that group. And as Ms. Quinn alluded, if this were a group nomination of multiple structures, it might be true. But if you use the example of the East Carson Street District, which is both a national register and a city historic district, there are four significant bank buildings in that district. Not one of them would qualify as an individual city historic structure.
Okay. Next person, Brenda, and I'm sorry, this is for the speakers. We have, you have three minutes. We got the test, I think, of it.
Brittany Riley is the next speaker.
Brittany?
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon. I will ask if I might just take an extra moment to share some thoughts, as I'm the nominator of the structure. So I will keep it brief, but continue with my commentary. So my name's Brittany Riley, 18242nd Street, Pittsburgh. So councilman, that is in Lawrenceville, and I previously lived in Highland Park. I would say I visit East Liberty at least a dozen times a week to use local businesses and use grocery stores and all kinds of businesses throughout East Liberty, as well as to just kind of meander around appreciating the architecture. So in my, I'm in my fourth year serving on the Board of Directors of Preservation Pittsburgh. I chair our Modern Committee. We're a volunteer group that advocates for our city's architecture that dates from the 1950s through the 1970s. We want to see it acknowledged and protected as a vital part of Pittsburgh's history. So we nominated this 1970 building at the Promet intersection of Penn and Center, a gateway to the East End and East Liberty. Our nomination was prompted by our ongoing interest and in-depth research into Mellon Bank's architectural projects at mid-century, which we find important to Pittsburgh's history. The HRC affirmed that the structure was worthy of landmark status for its place in Mellon Bank's exceptional architectural program, and for how it reflected the national and regional shift of styles towards modernism as expressed in civic and commercial architecture. Our original nomination presented that, under criterion three, the structure's particular modernist architecture and design potentially made it worthy for consideration as a landmark. Like Mr. Morosco, I also have knowledge of modernist design, and I'll just express that there's more to Pittsburgh and the region than Falling Water. Historical designation does not require that a building be iconic, but the vernacular should also be considered as well. Mr. Levine shared some examples of iconic structures seeming in an attempt to dismiss the potential significance of this structure, but there are different tenants around its use and its design. Then the Planning Commission endorsed that the structure's unique form provides an impactful visual interest and a sense of distinct place at this primary intersection. It holds its corner, it's site-specific, and that was customized by the architects for this urban triangular plot. So we all know that East Liberty has been through so many stages of transformation. It is now inclusive of several architectural styles. We feel it should continue demonstrating that the incorporation of historic structures can really strengthen a visionary and inspiring development plan for this commercial corridor.
Next speaker is Mary Berenfield.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for your time, council members. My name is Mary Berensfeld. Two commissions, the Historic Review Commission and the Planning Commission, reviewed this nomination. Despite what citizens just reeled off as facts by paid witnesses, both commissions voted in favor of supporting the nomination of 6112 Penn Avenue for historic landmark status, clear recommendations to city council. Appointed by city governance, these professionals voted approvingly, validating the nomination and the building as a valuable Pittsburgh cultural asset, one that has met several of the historic criterions for landmark status. A no vote by city council runs counter to the recommendations of both expert commissions and would be out of step with the nearly 100 individuals who wrote in support to the Pittsburgh Modern Committee. I'd like to quote Historic Review Commission Chair Lucia Agüero from the HRC hearing on May 5. "Last 25, last 20, last 10 years, last five years, East Liberty has changed so much. I actually used to live right on Friendship at the border of it, and I've seen things torn down that maybe it was okay for them to go away, but the entire neighborhood has been changing so much in its character. I feel that right now, who is writing the history of the community are what I'm going to say are the winners. I don't know if they really are the stakeholders of the entire community, but the people who have the means and the ways to shape it. And I know that this shape is in order to bring vibrancy and community and economic advantages to the community and the people who live there, but at the price of making difficult decisions about what stays, what goes, what has value and what doesn't. When I look at this building, and as I said, every time I see it, I know I'm looking at a Mellon Bank, green tile, and it's subjective. When I look at East Liberty in this building, I see this community is making it. This community is finding itself again, maybe in certain ways that are not pleasant. I don't want to touch on gentrification in certain ways, but we can't be selective about our history. History is history. We cannot be selective about what we consider a failure or not. Maybe the building is not the most modern and amazing building in the city. That's true. But that doesn't mean that it doesn't have value and has a value to our history of Pittsburgh and our neighborhood to protect it, not only for ourselves, but for the generations that are right behind us," end quote. "The incorporation of buildings of different periods into the built fabric of East Liberty is possible. There is value in collective memory, and historic preservation is a tool to foster it in communities. Furthermore, citizens, as tenant of an absentee owner, can reuse the building with surgical interventions to truly benefit its customers via neighborhood investment. Has citizens legitimately looked at reuse scenarios? The building and property has been selected by AIA Pittsburgh Young Architects Forum as their annual competition site, currently live on the AIA website. I look very much forward to seeing their designs for reuse emerge in their work this summer. Thank you very much for your time."
Next speaker is Melissa McSquiggan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to provide a little bit of background, as I've been working with Brittany and the Modern Committee. We learned after the fact that there was a citizens' community meeting in summer 2020 where two people attended, then another where four people attended. To my knowledge, this was the extent of citizens' public meetings regarding the site. In August, I contacted citizens and was directed to their Rhode Island headquarters and then wrote a letter to them with copies to Pittsburgh City Planning, the mayor, East Liberty Community Groups, and I received a basic reply from citizens in September. We began researching the Mellon Bank Buildings, which is a lengthy process in order to adhere to guidelines. We had reached out to ELDI in early February and tried to follow the internal city planning via the building I cite. In late February, I spoke with someone at Verriet, which is the LLC in Arizona who owns the building, to let them know of our plans to nominate it. And we also met with citizens in March and thought there was a chance for further dialogue, but then never received any response back from citizens when we contacted them to follow up. To my knowledge, and someone can correct me on this, the demolition and proposed new plans never went before the Planning Commission or zoning. I also don't believe it went to the Baum Center Initiative, though I believe the boundary ends at Shady Avenue. Citizens, or the city's internal process is tough to understand for an average person like me. Also, with no RCO in East Liberty, this can add to some of the difficulty. I realize citizens may want parking in a smaller building, but there is a free lot across the street for parking under 45 minutes and an opportunity for citizens to partner with local and emerging businesses and community groups to reinvigorate the existing building. Though this is just one idea to consider, bringing businesses, entrepreneurs, and groups together with a bank under one roof on the corner of Penn and Center could be an exciting possibility. More recently, we learned that Chase Bank wants to build a drive-through next door, which shows that some big-picture planning is important. As this is a prominent corridor, it's next to the East Liberty National Historic District, which does keep getting chipped away at with demolitions. I also hope this little, this area does not become a tiny Breeze Wood, but that can be worked on. I would love to see a vision for this block and a community process, perhaps such as what was done with Bloomfield Shore Save Grocery Store and Lawrenceville's county-owned Clack site.
Next speaker is Justin Greenawalt.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name is Justin Greenawalt, and as president of the East Liberty Valley Historical Society, I'll be speaking on behalf of my organization. Our address is PO Box 4922, Pittsburgh, 15206. The East Liberty Valley Historical Society is in full support of the historic designation of the former East Liberty branch of Mellon National Bank. We believe that historic preservation not only enriches our communities, it is sound public policy. I won't discuss this building's obvious merits that has already been done. But as you are weighing the merits of this nomination, councilors, I would respectfully ask that each of you consider the positive role that historic preservation plays in our city. We are here today discussing the merits of saving the Mellon National Bank because of the robust public involvement process afforded by our historic preservation ordinance. In contrast, the Citizens Bank-guided public involvement process involved two poorly advertised public meetings that included six community members total. I was one of those six attendees. A little bit of history. The historic preservation movement in Pittsburgh is based in the 1950s, 60s, and 70s. Specifically, historic preservation was a reaction to the widespread, heavy-handed, and top-down destruction brought by urban renewal. At that time, the people of Pittsburgh had little or no say in how their neighborhoods developed. In East Liberty, during the redevelopment of the 50s and 60s, people had no way of saying, "Please save the Liberty Theater. It's important to me. Please save our train station. We might need it again someday. Please save my house. I live there." "Please save my house, I live there." Federal, state, and local governments in partnership with moneyed private businesses told our communities what was best for them. We have been rebuilding ever since. The grassroots historic preservation movement exists to give people a voice. It developed as a way for the average, ordinary citizen to protect what they deemed was important in their community, and it is the reason that I even have a platform to speak to you today. And in ironic twist, we are discussing the merits of preserving a building that was born of the urban renewal era, because as difficult as that era was, we believe the story is still worth telling. This is one of the first mid-century buildings to come before this council for consideration as a historic property, so it might seem unfamiliar, but the nominators have made a sound case for its designation. I say all of this to make the following point. There has been an outpouring of support for saving the former Mellon National Bank. This council has a decision to make. Will it grant designation to a historic building that the people wish to protect? Or will it yield to the interests of an absentee-based owner in Arizona or the agent, a company headquartered in Rhode Island? To be more direct, will this body allow the mistakes of the past to be repeated in East Liberty? Or will we forge a new path forward? So with that, I will conclude, please save the Mellon National Bank. It is important to me, it is important to us. Thank you for your time.
The last speaker is Ikona Hal Mckina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikona Hal Mckina. I am the Grand Inca and the Chief of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, also known as Indians. I represent the voice of the indigenous people of the Americas. It is my desire to express the need to have spaces such as the previous Mellon Bank that is now empty and other spaces such as this, to have and implement cultural programs to make sure that the so-called Black and Brown people are still represented in a space known as East Liberty. That building is very unique. I've never seen a green brick building other than that building. And so I stand in solidarity with those who wish and desire to keep it preserved. And I would also suggest that that space be used as a healing space. With the proper renovations to the building, I understand that there is an asbestos issue, but that can be a space that can be revitalized such as the same way the Schimmy Building that was full of asbestos is now being renovated, well, is now housing condominiums. And not to suggest that this place should house condominiums, my suggestion is for it to be a healing space. Cultural oasis, which is right around the corner at the back of the Mellon Building, in a very small space, that that is a space of healing that takes place there. Our shaman's space of operation is there. And would love to move into a larger building. I'm pretty sure that out of the $335 million that the city is about to be allocated, that that place can be renovated and given to the community in order to heal the community, to allow the herbs that the earth provides to heal the people of the land. That's a great suggestion for this space. There has been a lot of businesses that have been moved out of the East Liberty corridor. And what a great opportunity that this is for city council to repurpose this very building that is standing in question with so many question marks. The only thing that hasn't been discussed in great detail is what the future plan for that space is. And reading through the lines, I can see that the banks have interest in not designating this land as a historical landmark because they don't want to be confined by the historical landmark designation if they choose to repurpose that space. I'm pretty sure real estate in this day and age, after gentrification of East Liberty, is a very valuable piece of property. And so I stand also, like I stated before, in solidarity with those who wish to designate that space as a historical landmark, and I do not wish to see it leave. It is a very unique space, and I think it can be repurposed for good in the community.
That's the last speaker.
Okay, members of council.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I want to thank all speakers. And I just wanted to ask some questions to our Historic Review Committee person. And so Sarah, some questions about this structure versus other structures of the same architect, do I have that right? The same architect did all? Or this was just the urban, the urban, I mean, the modernist plan? Different architects for all the different buildings?
Yeah, well, the bank, it says the bank was designed by Lift Justice and Chetlin. They designed the East Liberty Carnegie branch on Woodfield Street. They designed the East Pittsburgh branch of Mellon Bank and...
So they do the one on Squirrel Hill?
No, they did not do the one in Squirrel Hill. They, in Squirrel Hill, they did the Carnegie Library and several synagogues. But the Squirrel Hill branch was done under the same modern architecture program that was overseen by the Director of Facilities for Mellon Bank.
Director of Facilities, so that wasn't like an architect, that was just someone that hired the architects?
Well, I, yeah, I believe it would be roughly akin to someone in our Public Works Department hiring a design firm.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, because number seven, it's association with important cultural and social aspects or events in the history of the city of Pittsburgh. You know, that one.
Yeah, I honestly, I'm glad you brought that up. I wouldn't necessarily get stuck on the events part of it.
What do you mean?
The, well, what I was going to say is these criteria are based on National Register criteria, and they have four of them. Criterion A in the National Register is significant in its representation of broad patterns of American state and local history. And that's sort of what this is, is this is, this is sort of shows a revitalization of finances after World War II, a revitalization of design for the 60s and 70s. And so it's a pattern that not only went on in Pittsburgh, it went on in other places as well.
But the Historic Review Commission chose number seven as, I mean, can they choose more, maybe educate me a little bit here? They choose multiple of the 10?
Well, they can, but I mean, seven, seven is representative of cultural patterns, cultural, yeah.
So does this qualify for one of the other 10? I'm just trying to get some clarity on.
Um, it doesn't really need to, it just needs to qualify for one.
Okay. Well, that being said, since I'm looking at number seven, I'm really curious on, you know, the pattern that, that these were constructed. So for instance, this one was in our urban renewal that, you know, some, most would say failed. And, and was this similar to on the North Side? And so I guess what I'm wondering is exactly, I think what some of the speakers were questioning is, and what I question all the time, because, you know, like, my family was displaced a couple times with development on the North Side. How much do we celebrate those structures? And so I was wondering, is that what we're doing here? And the second question is, were the, were these other buildings a part of urban renewal?
No, this is not, there's nothing related to urban renewal under criteria seven as it's written in the briefing that I, the staff report that I provided to you.
Like the one on Squirrel Hill, is what I'm saying, is was that involved in a? Was that?
An urban?
Yeah.
No. No, I mean, it was, it was part of the same design movement as this building and the one on Fifth Avenue and the one that used to be downtown. So there's, there's, I mean, I did, I did a lot of research on this nomination too. I have to tell you when I got it, because I, I don't know modern architecture as well as I should, and being in Pittsburgh, you really don't get to see it all that much. But I called the, the gentleman's name is Kai, Kai Gosha, I believe. He is the Chair of the Modern Architecture Program at Carnegie Mellon. I talked to him for about an hour and a half on the phone about modern architectural styles and, and new urbanism and all this stuff. And he, we went through everything, and basically what he and I agreed upon is this that that program, that architecture program that Mellon Bank had was very unusual. It was very unusual in, in that it was, it was pretty much reflective of the gentleman's tastes for modern architecture at that time. And what that did was that presented a collection of buildings that's very unique in the city. Some were built by other banks, sort of as a response to that. But they weren't necessarily built where they were built, and they weren't designed where they were designed for urban renewal purposes. I think, I think, you know, as you yourself said, there's, a lot of folks were touched by urban renewal, whether they were really involved, part of, part of the focus of it or not, and, and and I think that's what we have, is a building that was built in 1971 in a location that was good for business because it was close to a redeveloped business district. I think, I don't think it was specifically built as part of an urban renewal program. And as far as, you know...
So this came before or after they made the circle?
I believe it was after, I believe it was after. Um, what I can tell you, though, is, you know, for all the surveys and things that were discussed earlier by other speakers, I can tell you that this, this property was not included. And it was not included at the time because it was not 50 years old at the time. That's the cutoff for federal, federal review is if it's 50 years old. So it's, it was built in 1971. In 2010, when ELDI did a survey, it was only 40 years old, it wasn't eligible. So.
Okay, my last question, I was just...
Okay, sure.
Is it, is it part of a, like a master plan of the community to save the structure at all? I realize in this area, there was a few different master plans that were, that were done, is that, is that, is this building included?
I don't, I don't believe it is. I don't know that it was identified. I'll be honest, I mean, I'm not a new, I'm not a strategic planner. There was nothing that came out in the Planning Commission hearing
Okay.
about that, so I would say no.
Okay, well, I just want to thank all the speakers that came for, you know, in support and oppose the designation, and I'm going to continue to look into this, so thank you. No further talk.
Other members.
Mr. Chair.
Erica, Ms. Strasburger.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that one of our, one of our speakers, one of our attendees, Brittany Riley, had asked for the same extension of the three-minute time that Cliff Levine had asked for. I think to be fair, we need to, we need to grant her that if she has additional, additional testimony she wants to.
She's still with us, David? Or Brenda, is she still with us? All right, so Brittany, I'm sorry, we cut you off after the three minutes. If you have, Ms. Strasburger has asked, and I'm certainly willing to permit you to have more time. So if there's some other things you want to address, you can do so at this moment.
I'm here, thank you, Councilman and Erica, I appreciate that. I will just add a few things, some of them have already been covered by my, my colleagues. I was ending on the note that I wanted to clarify that HRC did not land on the premise that the structure be designated because of its representation of a urban renewal or failed urban renewal period. So there's since been some clarification. I would more so say that Mellon Bank updated its branch after, after the master plan in the neighborhood and kind of in keeping with the neighborhood being modernized. I wanted to add that 20th century modern design, because it refrained from ornament in favor of a streamlined approach and applied enduring materials in an efficient way, it's resulted in this really timeless and classic effect that still influences architecture today. So I just wanted to highlight that the structure has aged well physically and conceptually. The exterior exhibits very high integrity, and the interiors are spacious and open, no matter the extent to which vacancy and neglect have perhaps caused some leaking. So there is potential for adaptive reuse for the structure into a multiplex that would invite a variety of local and incoming business and even community services. Some examples were shared by one of the speakers today. I did want to say that our committee actually discussed this with Citizens Bank representatives in hopes we could work together on a path forward, but heard nothing more from them. I share the concern that the needs of a non-local building owner and tenant have been too readily prioritized over those of the local community. We've shared with you at least 100 expressions of support in the form of letters and comments from community members and professionals. And just because the structure has, had not been written into or acknowledged in design history to date does not mean that there is not grounds for reapproaching it and understanding in hindsight its importance to the architectural fabric of the region and to East Liberty. We also presented to individuals such as the Laramore Consensus Group. Without a registered community organization in East Liberty, we did our best to reach further to ask groups like the Laramore Consensus Group what they felt, what they, how, what their perspective was on this building. And it would seem to me that no one else had asked to date for their insight or opinion. We had reached ELDI, and with all due respect, if, if they do feel that they represent the community voice, I would like to learn more about their process of how they gather and broadcast real perspective from the community. I hope that we can work together to put something in place that really lays a foundation for a more equitable process for everyone. In some cities, there is an automatic cursory review for structures of some stature that have reached 50 years of age so that there is a review that allows for the time and space for all interested stakeholders and parties to put in their two cents and have a conversation rather than it becoming contentious. And the last thing I'll mention is that there was a, ELDI, to mention them again, published a circulation and mobility action plan. That was in 2014, and while it does not mention the structure specifically, we did find that it, it mentions things that this building's character might retain. For example, you know, it's, you know, certain kind of scale and historic textures on facade. So I would encourage you to revisit that ELDI Circulation and Mobility Plan of 2014 just for some added context on what value this might have in the neighborhood. So thank you for that, that extra time.
Mr. Strasburger.
I've been briefed by, I guess, both, both parties, both camps on this, and so I have no further questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Miss Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you hear a thud, it's probably because Councilman Burgess fell off his chair. I'm concerned about process, I'm concerned about how this came to be. And I, I'm gonna, I, I am gonna need some additional time to think through how this nomination came to be. And I'll need some time to think about how this, this nomination came to be. I may, depending on, Councilman Wilson, I believe this might even be under your committee, is that correct? I may have an off, you know, the, you know, off-site conversation with you about possibly, depending on how members feel, maybe to hold this a week to let members process. depending on how members feel, maybe to hold this a week to let members process all that's come down and have a clearer understanding of just exactly what kind of action we're taking here. But I would be insincere if I did not say I'm concerned about the process by which this came to the council. And I really would like to clear my thoughts on that and have a better understanding of why it's here and why we're undertaking this.
Other members. So I tried in my old age not to fall because I go down fast, but you're not going to slow, right?
I don't mean to make light, I'm sorry.
That's okay, so a couple things. It's pretty much documented that I am against designation over owner dissent. So on that grounds alone, I would not support this denomination. Secondly, I find it interesting that the Historic Review Commission did not approve any of the reasons that the nominators asked for the building to be nominated. They did not find any of the things that they asked for persuasive, but then they found something else that had nothing to do with the architecture of the building specifically to umbrella it under other movements of buildings who are not nominated. So think about that for a minute. They want to nominate a building because it represents other buildings that are also not nominated. This doesn't make sense to me. Second of all, the community groups in that, when they, I guess, it's like this, you know, I always find it interesting when people talk about community access, yet they don't live in the community. None of the speakers live in East Liberty, none of them represent a single group from East Liberty. The groups that represent East Liberty, the East Liberty Development Corporation, the Village Collaborative, which is the recognized community group in East Liberty. So we actually do have an RCO in East Liberty. None of them support the historic designation of this building. A councilperson in the district does not support historic nomination of this building. It is an ugly building. If you go past and look at it, it's absolutely just, it has outlived its usefulness in multiple ways. Plus, they already start demoing the building. So the building now is not in good shape. Third of all, there is no revenue. There is no vehicle to rehab this building. There is no plan nor money to rehab it and restore it. So that what we're doing is now forcing the owners of the building to rehab a building that they have no use for, that they already started tearing down. It's like this, and this is, this is a prime example of all we have to change our law. This is exactly example. My son has an old car, he came over earlier today, they're thinking about buying a new car. They have an old car. I like the car, it has lots of memories for me. He's been driving it for a long time. You know, we went in, we were in it doing a lot of memorable things. But it's his car, and so do I have a right to say, no, you can't trade that car in, you got to keep that old car because I like it. I'm not going to pay for it, I have nothing to do with it other than I have memories of it. I just, I find that we should make, here's what I think is fear. Now, I keep waiting not to introduce a legislation, I guess I should go on and introduce it. It seems to me that if a city decides, and it can, that a building is historic, and we should not force the owner to maintain buildings that we think are historic when they don't want them. We should buy them. We should offer the owner, and then the city takes responsibility for the historic nature of this building that we want to maintain. I think that's fair. I think it's unfair for people outside a community who have absolutely nothing directly to do with that community other than walking past or shopping at the stores outside of that community. They don't live in the community, they don't represent the community, they're not part of the community organizations, but they know better than that community what's in its best interest. I have always found that to be highly offensive when outside organizations go into a community and decide that they know better than that community what's in its best interest. The East Liberty community as a whole does not want this building designated. All those who want it designated live outside the community. The historic, the Historic Review Commission itself did not even accept the criteria that invented this catch-all. Under that catch-all, any single building could be viewed as part of a movement, anything. I could go build a garden house in my backyard and say, oh, it's historic because other people on my, in my, in my block built gardens, and all I have to do is wait, you know, five years from now, and 50 years from now, and this is a historic thing because it's part, although I didn't nominate anything else. Everything about this is not right. So I'm going to, I think this is a classic example of historic nominations that should never become the council, should never be part of our consideration. It runs counter of the community's best interest. It is, at best, a classic form of elitism. Those outside the community thinking they know best, what's best for the community, and they use the power of the city to punish owners of buildings and punish communities for their own pleasure. It is not right to do it this way. We should not be doing this. And I've been saying this since I've been a member of council, I've been extraordinarily consistent. And so I will, I will, I am, I will vehemently oppose this. I will vote no this week, I will vote no next week, I'll vote work no three months from now. This should not be nominated, it should be torn down, and the new building that's functional and be in the best interest of the residents should be enacted in its place. That's what I think. Any questions or any other questions or concerns? If not, thank, I do thank, and I do thank, you know, the public for coming, I thank them for their perspective. And I appreciate Sarah and all the great work they do on historic nominations. With that, if there's no other concern, we will now adjourn this public hearing.